All right, I will call this meeting to order. The Planning Commission meeting of January 11, 2022. I need approval of the minutes for the December 14, 2021 regular meeting.
So move.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Next item is communications from the audience for items that are not listed as a public hearing on the agenda. All the items on the agenda that have an asterisk next to them, you will have an opportunity as the public to speak on that item. But if there's anything that you would like to speak on that is not on the agenda, you may come forward at this time. Okay, unfinished business. 897 East 16th Street, site plan review request for a skilled nursing facility applicant is Iton Flank, progressive quality care.
Good evening again, Craig Engler, Drazing Gun Associates. Since we last talked, we have completed our stormwater review with Brian White and the Transportation Department. There's a few minor adjustments still needed. But everything regarding the easements that we had discussed with the Holland Public Schools to the Northwest. Both parties have signed the easement agreement. It was voted approved by the school board. The document is ready to be recorded with the Ottawa County Register of Deeds. When we last talked, there was concerns about evaluating existing trees on the site. And since then, I have engaged Bartlett tree experts out of Zealand. They have familiarity with Holland and Hope College and definitely are able to go to the site and evaluate trees that are of the size within the ordinance as well as healthy, non-invasive trees. We will establish where those are located and show those on an exhibit that we will provide to city staff to show the trees that we are saving that are in the northwest corner of the site in the conservation easement, as well as making sure that the trees that we are impacting in the development area are substantially replanted per the ordinance requirements. Everything else that we had discussed is still scheduling and everything in terms of the spring that we're hoping to start is still the plan. We're still looking to only have the single west east driveway. We had removed the western driveway on 16th Street. We're still looking to relocate the cross through on 16th Street so it aligns with our east driveway. And all the utility connections through, per the Holland Board of Public Works, to create a loop through to 12th Street. Those are all still planned and in the process and will be done as part of the project. We do think that the site will take about two years to construct with most of the work on 16th Street and the connection of the water main beneath 16th Street happening, not this summer, but the following summer, with opening most likely happening at the end of summer of 23. And we did have our public outreach meeting on January 4th. Hopefully everyone got an invitation to that. It was held via Zoom. Unfortunately, there was less participation than we had hoped. We had an unknown caller that did not speak, and we also had Mr. James Shipper, who owned Lighthouse Group property to the west, who was concerned about the visuals on the property of the building. We made sure to clarify that we weren't putting up any large structures or any large signage or anything that would obscure the vision of that building. As far as the parcel combination and the rezone, which we will be, are we having a separate conversation about the rezone and?
We are going to talk about them together.
Okay.
But we do have to make separate motions for each item.
I'll talk about it right now then.
Yes, go ahead.
We are in the process of putting the documents together for the parcel combination, the drawing. So that would be ready to go pending the vote of the rezone. And yeah, the public outreach meeting had been for the rezone and we did not hear any. There had been no comments, no calls or anything to me regarding the change of the PUD to high-density residential for that.
And if there had been any letters, the staff would have gotten it and we haven't gotten anything, so.
I think that's everything. Really no changes with the project as a whole.
Great. Thank you, Craig. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, great. Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Stephen?
Sure. I just put a picture on the screen, kind of highlight those changes. Craig has mentioned some of them already. You've seen this plan. But some of the changes from what was originally presented to you, I just tried to highlight there those those blue ovals in the parking lot where the underground stormwater retention originally was. That now is being moved to the west. That's the property that they've are purchasing, that they would like to rezone to accommodate for their stormwater. The arrow in the in the road, as Craig mentioned, that's the elimination of the western curb cut. If you remember, that was one of the items that our engineering department had some questions about early on. And so that has been eliminated. One of the changes on the site plan as a result of that is you see just north of that is basically a large turnaround. That's to accommodate some emergency vehicles. So the fire department has has seen and approved that as well. And then over on sort of that upper left-hand corner, you see that blue line, stormwater discharge to Hope. So if you remember, the really the second item that the city engineer had some concerns with originally was, you know, the traffic study and the stormwater. So we really wanted the stormwater to move out to Hope Avenue rather than go north into the Farrington neighborhood. So all of the all of the delay, all of the changes that have had have happened have really been to accommodate that stormwater going west out to Hope. So that is being accomplished now. And as Craig has mentioned, they have the agreement with the school. We actually have a signed copy of that easement, so pending your approval, it would just get recorded. So maybe just to quickly, for the sake of the public, the project itself, 100-room nursing home facility. It's about 85,000 square feet. Obviously, it's got the associated improvements along with it. And then one item that we've talked about repeatedly is it has onsite daycare for the employees as well. I too was going to talk about the rezoning at the same time. Let's see if that screen changes for us. The property that is being purchased to be rezoned, highlighted there with where the arrow is showing you, is zoned PUD right now. So they would rezone it to the the high-density residential, combine it into this project. It is about an acre in size. It is master planned in what we call the marketplace commercial. It's essentially a very similar zoning district to our CMU and our and our GMU zone districts. But what I was trying to highlight with including this was just to show you that all of that property, including what they want to develop, is in the same master plan designation. So including this area, this this one acre piece of property from the PUD that's existing to the HDR, in my opinion, would be consistent with our master plan. That existing PUD accommodates those three offices, or three buildings, is a couple of different offices, a bank. And then there is this vacant piece of property to the east of that Lighthouse Insurance Building. And you look at an aerial photo, a couple of the things that kind of stick out to me is there is sort of some low area that kind of diagonally crosses this piece of property, which of course isn't a surprise. That's also when you look at their site plan where they have some of that wetland area. So it really kind of limits what could really be done on this piece of property. In addition, the existing PUD doesn't allow for any additional access out to the road. They have to share that existing curb cut that's out there. So to me, you know, the development of this piece of property really would be best probably with one of the two adjacent pieces of property. So having it being added to the nursing home facility seems to make a lot of sense. Nothing else to really highlight from the original plans that you've seen. They've essentially addressed all of the other items that have come across. As Craig mentioned, they still have to give us some of that information regarding the landscaping and the and the trees on site. But all of that would be would be done and would be part of a conditional approval. I too had talked to our engineering department and agree that there's just a few small details. I think we're talking about making sure they have the right pipe size on some of these outlets. But all of that, very normal. And we're suggesting that it would be appropriate to recommend approval of the site plan with those conditions that we listed in the staff report and recommend the city council the approval of the rezone of that piece of property from PUD to HDR.
Any questions from commission members? Any comments? No, okay. At this time, we will have a public hearing on this item. If you would like to speak on this item, you can come forward to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I will close the public hearing at this time. Any discussion, motions, or we actually have to do these separate. So we have to do the site plan and the rezoning separate. So we, just for clarification.
I believe all the questions we had were answered and over the last couple of months. And so I would move that we approve the site plan. Oh, as presented.
I'm going to say let's do the rezoning first.
Oh.
That's okay.
If you insist.
I move we recommend rezoning this property from PUD to HDR.
Support.
Second that.
We have two supports. Mallory? Do a roll call.
Yeah, the motion is to recommend the rezoning. So Box?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Genova? Dublock?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
So I would move that we approve the site plan with conditions noted in the staff report.
Support.
All right, Mallory?
All right, the motion is to approve the site plan. Dublock?
Yes.
Box?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to approve passes.
And just for clarification, we had that under unfinished business and then under new business, correct? Yes. First one was the rezoning and the second was the site plan. All right, moving on to under new business. Letter B. 421 East 32nd Street, Planned Unit Development Site Plan Amendment Request for the construction of a mixed-use development in two phases. Applicant is Kenny Lynn from Huiyang Wei LLC. Is the applicant here to speak on this item?
Yes, hello, Mike Baker from Naderfeld here on behalf of Kenny Lynn. As you said, this is 421 32nd Street and we're seeking a site plan approval through the PUD. And just some general information on the sites, just over three acre site at the corner of 32nd Hastings, the northwest corner. And we're proposing a two-phase construction of the site plan. Phase one is going to include a restaurant and banquet room and then also four residential apartments and the site improvements. And then phase two would be deferred for a later date. And that would include a building addition with additional retail and apartments. Just a little history on this particular site and this approval. The original PUD was approved in 1997 along with the neighboring Apple Dorn Senior Living facility. This particular parcel is included in that PUD and was designated for neighborhood commercial and office type uses. We did, some of you may be familiar with it, we did present a site plan in 2019, very similar to this layout, and that was approved. In 2020, we came back for an amendment, basically to reduce the size of the building for budgetary reasons. Thinking that through further, the applicant would like to go back with this proposal, very similar to the original approval, and then do the phasing as a way to kind of manage the budget. So understand, I've got the staff report with a number of conditions and comments from Transportation Services and the Fire Department, BPW. We're, don't have any issue with any of those. So happy to answer any questions on those at the appropriate time.
Yeah, that would be now.
Okay.
You can stay right where you are. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Nope. All right. You are good. Thank you for that. Yes, some of us have seen this application before. Stephen, anything to add on that one?
Yeah, maybe just real quick. It is part of a PUD as he's mentioned, and I wanted to just quickly summarize some of those because there were some specific things that were in the PUD that kind of spoke to this piece of property that I want to make sure everybody's clear on. One of them was the use of the property. As I mentioned, it was, the idea was that it would be mixed use. One of the requirements in the PUD was that the residential was limited to the second floor and above. They've obviously proposing to include some residential on the main floor, which we have approved before. But I guess I want to make sure you guys are aware of that. Setbacks, setbacks were to be determined by the Planning Commission. And really, as they've mentioned, this really is very similar to a plan that we've approved before. And so it's really the same setbacks that we've established prior to this. Access, access to the site, so this was included as part of a larger PUD that has a curb cut out to 32nd Street. And the idea was that there wasn't going to be any other curb cuts out to 32nd Street unless the Planning Commission granted that, which you have done before twice. But again, I wanted to make sure that you were aware that that was something that you needed to approve. Parking, the parking, again, I would describe it as just like what you've seen before, especially the 19 plan. The only comment that I made is now in the new Udo ordinance, we require that you break up these large stretches of parking spaces with a landscape island after a run of 20. So really, with the exception of their parking that's right up along the building as you come in off of 32nd Street, it meets Udo. If it were to meet, letter of the law, they would need one more island in that run. Surface water drainage. I guess I just wanted to point out that they have now included this biosway which you see in that upper right-hand corner of the site plan. I think that's a great addition to the to the site. Essentially what that treats water, you know, before it goes into the stormwater, cleans it up a little bit. So I think that is a great feature on the site. It's something that we put into Udo now to hopefully encourage as well. But that is a little bit different than the original plan. The required open space was 20%. We calculate their site to be at 24%. Landscaping, landscaping is actually a little bit more landscaping than what we saw with the previous plans. So I guess that's a positive thing as well. Architectural compatibility, there was some comments. We didn't have any criteria or standards in the PUD ordinance, but it essentially allowed the Planning Commission to to consider these things. The materials have changed a little bit over these couple of plans that have been approved. I think the original plan had much more brick. The second plan that we approved had a little bit more kind of a metal building. This one is a little bit of a combination of the two. So in signage, I just pointed that out because they're not asking for any changes. I think the last plan that you saw, there was a slight exception they were asking for with some signage being closer to the road off of 32nd Street, so that they are not seeking now. So really, other than that, it's very standard in terms of the staff report and the conditions. I would highlight that the engineering department is now requiring a traffic study. So it's possible that there could be some changes that come from that, from talking with our staff. He really just wanted to confirm, you know, the design that you see on there. So we don't suspect there'll be any changes as a result, but it is a possibility. So with that, we're recommending approval of their site with the conditions that we've put in the staff report.
Stephen, for just for clarification then, if there were changes that needed to be made based off the traffic study, that would be done in-house or would that come back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So I guess I'm going to say it kind of depends what it is. It certainly could trigger that it comes back to Planning Commission, but it certainly is possible that it would be a staff level review as well.
Okay.
The probably the big highlight with the traffic improvements, not only the curb cut to 32nd Street, you do see some widening. That's the darker area on the north side of 32nd Street, which is essentially just extending the left turn lane on 32nd Streets. But but yeah, we don't know yet what
Okay.
other changes could be.
Any questions from commission members? All right, thank you, Stephen. And at this time, I will open a public hearing on this item. If you would like to speak on this item, you can come forward at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Any comments, discussion among commission members on this item? Some of us have seen this before and some of us have not. Any questions?
For those of us that have seen it, it looks, it keeps getting better with more landscaping. So I would actually move to approve the site plan as presented with the conditions noted in the staff report.
Support.
All right, all those, let's see, let's do a roll call, Mallory?
All right, the motion is to approve the site plan. Dublock?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Box?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to approve passes.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for coming. Next item, the next four items on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one there. Next item on the agenda, letter C, under new business, 795 East 24th Street. Rezoning request for the west 99 feet of the property from greenfield mixed use to planned unit development, PUD. Applicant is the city of Holland. So Stephen, you are up.
Right, thank you. Yeah, it's a little bit different that we're the applicant, but we're here really to make a correction. So this is a project that, as you mentioned, several of you have seen, probably familiar with. This has been rezoned to PUD. And then right after that, when we adopted Udo, we didn't quite draw the line in the right spot. So the area that I've highlighted on the plan that's in that sort of highlighted area, we kind of rezoned back to the the greenfield mixed use to GMU. So really, we're here to correct this. We found this out when our assessor was, you know, working on the split combination to accommodate the development and noticed that the zoning wasn't matching up. So the only, the only sort of nuance to it is what was originally 110 feet wide being purchased by the developer from Grand Valley. Now Grand Valley is only selling them 99 feet. So that's a slight change to the site plan. I know I put a bunch of pictures in your report so you could kind of compare. It's probably impossible to tell what those are because it's so small. I did, I did try to put in there the the close-up view for that. So really, that's the setback that we're talking about. What was noted as 38 feet is now 26. I know that means it doesn't add up. But if you look really closely at the site plans, you see that the previous plan that we approved had that 38-foot setback, measured it from a spot that wasn't the closest point of that building. So that's why those two numbers don't add up. So just to point that out. Included in your report is also the the PUD ordinance that goes along with this project. And the reason why we did that is we're, we wanted to show you the areas. There are some areas that are changing as a result of just that small nuance of that little bit narrower piece of property. So we put that in your packet and you can see highlighted in red. I don't know, there's probably half a dozen areas that change or or we updated the date of a site plan or something. So just some things that change as a result of this new, this new plan. In terms of the rezoning itself, in terms of the master plan, you can see it's in that same category, that marketplace commercial. So all of that property in that surrounding area is part of that same master planned area. And you can see here from the zoning map, this is the sliver of piece of property that just didn't get put into that PUD. So we think that that rezoning to the PUD is completely consistent with the master plan and follows all of those criteria that we have for the rezoning. And we're recommending that you forward that rezoning to the city council for their approval.
Great, thanks. Any questions from commission members? Nope, all right. This does require a public hearing, so I will open a public hearing on this item for anyone from the public that would like to come forward. And seeing that there is none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion or motions from commission members?
I move that we recommend approval of the rezoning of the western 99 feet of 795 East 24th Street from GMU to PUD to city council with the condition that the rezoned property be added to the existing property at 717 East 24th Street as shown in the newly approved PUD site plan dated 11/17/21.
I support that.
David supports. And Mallory?
All right, the motion is to recommend approval to city council. Box?
Yes.
Dublock?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Raymond? Raymond?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to approve passes.
All right, great, thank you.
I also move that we approve the new site plan and adapt the revised PUD resolution to accommodate the new site plan and the revisions needed to accommodate the minor setback changes, under the condition that the city council approves the PUD rezoning of the western ninety-nine feet of seven ninety-five East Twenty-Fourth Street.
Support.
All right, the motion is to recommend approval, let's see, Box?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
DeBlak?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to approve passes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, letter D, under new business, chapter thirty-nine Unified Development Ordinance text amendment request to sections thirty-nine dash two-point-zero-five, low-density residential, LDR, and thirty-nine dash two-point-zero-seven, medium-density residential, MDR, regarding the front yard setback exception. That was a mouthful.
Yes, thank you. The closest house rule, so if you remember, we introduced these at the previous meeting, and we kind of broke up some of these Udo amendments to remove sort of the ones that are a little bit more substantive, so we've got a couple amendments that we put in that category, and then we've got sort of that list of the, I guess what I'll call the normal amendments we've been working on. So this first one is the closest house rule, so this is, this is a provision that we had previously that allowed somebody to build a house on a street. If you had a, a house on your, on your street that was maybe only five feet off of the, the setback line, and the requirement was twenty, you could build as close as five feet because that was what the closest house on your street had. Udo, we essentially took that out, so we're suggesting that we put it back in, in a slightly modified version, so on your screen are the two versions, so the original language is up on top, and then the language on the bottom with the graphic is what we're proposing. What the new front yard exception would do is essentially have that same scenario where you have a house on your street closer to the setback line, we would take the, the average of the two properties that are, you know, next to you, and establish that as your front yard setback, so it allows you to get a little bit closer, but then also gets you a little bit closer to compliance too, so it doesn't just allow you to go to, to that smallest setback. And then the other nuance of the change is, you look closely, I tried to highlight it there on the screen, the previous version had a no closer than five feet rule, this one says no closer than ten. So again, the idea was to allow for the smaller setback while still try to, try to get some of these a little bit closer to compliance than what we had before, so that is the change that we are suggesting with this closest house rule. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I mean, I, I agree totally with the closest house rule. I'm not sure, how does the, how does that work in your neighborhood there, Mr. Mayor?
I'm, I'm hon, I'm honestly not a fan of the closest house rule, mainly because there's the possibility that all, that all of the houses in a particular neighborhood start gravitating closer and closer to the street, which, which I'm not, which, under thi, under this proposed one, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't do it to the extreme that, that my understanding of the closest house rule is, which is, hey, if you've got a house that, under the, under the previous rule, if there's one house in the neighborhood on your street that's five feet, eventually, theoretically anyway, every house on the street could move to fi, could move to that distance.
No, think about it, it's kind of like if I keep walking half the distance to you, I'll never get there.
But that's, that's the new rule, not the old rule. The, the new rule, the new rule is you're averaging the two.
Right, which means, the old rule would mean every house would be five feet.
That's what, exactly, I'm not, I'm not a fan of the old rule.
But the new rule means you average it out between the two that are already there.
I, I prefer the new rule to the old rule.
Right, but I still don't buy in on the ten feet minimum, because if all the houses are between five and seven, why the heck would your house have to be that far off the curb?
Well, and that was my question is, what's, how did you get to the ten versus the five, and what was that based on?
Well, I, I don't think that we, I guess I'll say we didn't do any kind of study of that, but I guess I'll say the concept of trying to get that closer to compliance, so it's closer to conformity than just letting you go down to the smallest one, I don't think we could, I mean, we still have a zoning board of appeals, right, I mean, they can still hear, you know, exceptions to the rules and things like that, but the idea was to, to create a little bit of flexibility with trying to still get you closer to compliance, so it's not a great answer, there wasn't a scientific, you know, analysis of that, but it was just sort of the concept of, let's get closer to compliance and still have some sort of flexibility.
The, the place where, where obviously Dave, you and I are talking about is the, is CNR, yeah, Central Park, Central Park.
Actually, a lot of blocks downtown, which I've actually designed some houses for.
Okay.
Well, and, and just-
We went with the ten-foot back, and if you'll notice the one that's on, I want to say Seventeenth between River and Pine, it is set back further than everybody else in the neighborhood, for just that reason. I have no idea how that happened.
And this only applies to the LDR and the MDR.
So it doesn't apply to CNR? Okay.
No.
Or TNR?
They have their own ones.
They've, yeah, well, CNR is kind of that-
But I thought this was applying to all the sections.
So I, I think, I don't believe it did previously either, but it applied to many more districts then, so right now, you were just suggesting these two.
Oh.
What's, what's the, the standard front yard setback in LDR and MDR? Those are the two that we're looking at, right? I can't remember all of those.
Is it thirty? I thought it was-
Tricia's coming.
There's Tricia, got it.
Thirty feet, LDR, twenty-five feet, MDR.
Ten, ten is a huge variance from the thirty and the twenty-five.
Yeah, but why would you mess with the average of the neighborhood if you're-
We're not, well-
Just to throw it in.
The, but the recommendation isn't messing with the aver, isn't saying mess with the average of the neighborhood, it's saying is, take the average of the neighborhood into consideration with this, if I'm understanding this right-
But it's gotta be at least ten.
But no-
So it doesn't have to be at least ten, but if you had somebody in your neighborhood that maybe you did have two fives, you couldn't go down to five.
You'd have to-
What if you were the house between those two fives, so you don't get to look down the street, but you have to be back five feet?
Well, we're, we're talking about MDR and LDR, we're not talking about the downtown neighborhoods at all.
We're not talking TRN?
No.
No.
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Ten, ten's awfully tight in MDR and LDR.
Yes, it is.
In TNR or CNR, it's not, and I, and for anybody watching at home, I'm sorry for all the acronyms, but that's-
What is the, the typical neighborhood, what is the TNR? Is it still the average?
Ten feet is the minimum setback in TNR.
Ten feet is the minimum setback.
Unless the neighbors on either side are less than that, so that's why that house got set back further than the neighbors.
If there's an int-
Well, you could always go, you could always go back further.
We're not talking about not being able to see down the street, we're talking about being able to see down the street like the rest of your neighbors.
Lynn, what were you gonna say?
I was just wondering, if the intention is to get it close to compliance, why wouldn't we just establish the thirty feet for new properties? Why would, why are we, why are we doing the average?
Because we have some where they are closer.
And LDR and MDR.
Right. And so I guess you, we either, we either, you know, develop a way, which I'm assuming was even, you know, our previous version was a way to deal with that, or, you know, you would have those people go through some sort of zoning variance process, which is a little bit tougher, different set of criteria.
Maybe the other planning commissioners can help me out with this. We left this out of Udo, was this something that we left out on purpose, or is this something that we, one of the, you know, three or four things that we forgot when we put Udo together?
This is the first time, since we've been talking about the closest house rule, that was the first time I'd heard of it.
Okay.
I don't, that, that's just my memory of it.
I mean, I, I, I won't speak for Tricia, but I'll say, you know, we think it was more of an error that wasn't intended to be left out.
Okay.
It was an oops.
It was an oops, all right, that's, because that, that's helpful to me in, in this discussion as well, is that I, I'm, I'm not inclined to go, oh, let's change, change something that we decided during the Udo process and went through that deliberation, but if it was an oops, then it's something that I'm interested in, in looking at, but I'm, I'm much, I'm a much bigger fan of the revised version, or the, the recommended version of this from staff than I am of the old closest housed rule, but Lynn, I think I'm, I'm kind of in your camp, even leaning more in your camp of, I, I don't necessarily have an issue with somebody who's in this situation going to the board of appeals and making that recommendation to the board of appeals for a variance on it, rather than just saying we're gonna, we're gonna universally do that. And, and Dave, I'm, I'm completely in disagreement with you about the, making it less than ten feet, yeah, I, because once, once you get that far off of what the, the standard is, I'm not, it's not something that I'd, that interested in putting into the code.
I'm totally lost now in all this, so like, so the ten feet is the absolute minimum, however, most won't be ten feet because it's the average of the two houses on either side. So we are really saying ten feet is the minimum, but in most cases, it's gonna be the average, or is ten feet-
I, I would agree, it would probably be very rare that we would have, you know, a home, two homes that would end up creating an average of less than ten feet, that would be pretty rare.
Right.
Ten feet is, I think, also our smallest front yard setback.
Do you have any idea how many of these we're talking about, Steve? Roughly, I know, I know that that's a, that's like trying to nail Jello to a wall, but because there, there's so many vari, so many things, but are we talking about, there are a dozen possible scenarios around in the MDR and LDR, or a hundred, or a thousand?
Yeah, I'd probably ask Tricia for some help on that.
I guarantee you, it's not a thousand.
So first of all, you have to have somebody that's either building a new house or putting on an addition.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have to have two houses on each adjacent side that are already significantly less setback than what the requirement is. So I think it's probably not real likely we'll have very many of them that would actually be in LDR and MDR and go to ten feet. So there may be, there are older neighborhoods that have existing houses that are built to a lesser setback than what the current requirements are. You could have a house that burns down, someone wants to rebuild, and instead of putting their newly rebuilt house at the thirty-foot setback, they're like, well, both of my neighbors are at twenty, so can, I'd like to be in line, we'd like the block to look uniform, we'd like to look nice when it's driving, we're driving down, down the street, so we'd like to push it up a little bit more. It doesn't mean they have to go to twenty if that's the average of the neighbors, they could still build to thirty, but it gives them an option to provide uniformity and consistency in a neighborhood.
It also gives them the opportunity to have a bigger backyard, or to have a, a certain shaped house on their lot, or it just gives them the freedom to be able to use that space.
More options.
Yes.
But isn't that a zoning variance question though? Wouldn't that just go to, it, I mean-
Never has been.
I mean, why are we giving them a loophole?
Zoning variances are extremely difficult, and you would have to find-
Oh, no, I've sat on zoning board appeals, I know exactly what it is. But if you have two houses, setback twenty, your house built, burned down, it was at twenty, pretty sure the zoning board of appeals would go, well, that makes sense to have this at twenty because that's what it was, that's what the neighborhood is, I know we're not setting a precedent, but that, to me, that, I would look at that and say, that makes sense.
That's not how our zoning rules are written, so you would have to have a hardship with the land that would prohibit you from meeting the ordinance requirements in order to get a zoning variance.
So we're putting this loophole in there so that they don't have to go to zoning board?
For uniformity and consistency in the neighborhood if someone needs to rebuild or would like to put an addition on, and the houses around them are already built to a lesser setback.
Well, and I also think that, if I remember correctly, part of the, one of the things that we were trying to do with Udo was to avoid a lot of these kinds of variance requests, is that my memory, so that may also be why we're looking at this one.
So the loophole existed before, we've made it a lot more conservative than it was. The discussions with the CNR zone district, they specifically did not want it, so we have left it out of there. We didn't get any feedback, it's my understanding, during the public meetings from LDR or MDR, that it was an issue, and I can think, most of them that we've approved in the past have been in CNR or TNR. In the primary, the main setback for TNR now, I think, is ten feet, so it's, that's irrelevant. So I don't know how many there potentially could be, but there have to be several factors in place before we even apply the rule. So I agree with Jeff, it is a loophole, but I think it's a loophole that's beneficial to the neighborhood and to the city for uniformity and consistency.
Thank you.
I'm convinced. I'm ready to make a motion to recommend to city council to update section two-point-zero-five, two-point-zero-six, and two-point-zero-seven to revise the closest house rule.
We need to have a public hearing on this first.
Well, let's do that.
Okay, thanks.
While you're getting caught.
I'm glad I didn't have to use my gavel on that one.
Let me just, two-point-o-six is a typo, it's just two-five and two-seven, sorry.
All right then, well, I'm gonna withdraw my motion for the moment anyway, so.
There's no zero.
Sorry, there is, two, it's, it doesn't include two-point-o-six.
Just two, two-point-o-five and two-point-o-seven.
Okay, gotcha, and, yeah, I, all right. At this time, I'm gonna open a public hearing on just this item regarding the LDR and MDR setback. If anyone would like to come forward on this item. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Now, I will listen to any discussion or motions.
Now I might have changed my mind.
No.
I, I would recommend, I'd make, move that we recommend to city council to update section two-point-zero-five and two-point-zero-seven to revise the closest house rule as has been presented in the staff report.
I'd support that.
Dave DeBlak supports, and Mallory?
All right, the motion is to recommend approval, Box?
Yes.
DeBlak?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next item, letter E, under new business, is chapter thirty-nine Unified Development Ordinance text amendment request to section thirty-nine dash five-point-one-one regarding building materials when requesting site plan approval.
Good, thank you. So this was the other one that we had that was a little bit more substantive, that we wanted to break out and have a separate conversation. Right now, the language that you see on the screen, the, the version on the top is what's in Udo today. We're suggesting to revise that language with what is shown on the bottom of the screen. So right now, sheet metal, or materials that resemble sheet metal, are prohibited in all zone districts except for industrial. We're suggesting a little bit of a softening of that language, that would provide some language that would say building materials would be compatible and similar with the type of materials in the surrounding buildings, and that sheet metal would be discouraged in all zone districts except for industrial. The idea there was to create some flexibility, you know, maybe there could be some situations where, you know, maybe a small accent or something would be fine. I think it's important to remember that these are for projects that require site plan approval, so there's going to be some sort of oversight, it's either gonna come here, or, or maybe it's admin review, but there'll be some sort of review to be able to look at those materials, so again, we just thought it would be a little bit more flexible, provide a few more options to people than to strictly prohibit- to people than to strictly prohibit it.
And this would be for all zone districts except for industrial?
Steve, I have one question.
I, I mean, I guess I'll just answer and say, yeah, it's for all zone districts, it's just, sheet metal was never thought of being prohibited in the industrial district.
Right.
So, the site plan we just sent, recommended approval, has metal and brick on it. What's the difference between metal, sheet metal? I mean, that's kind of a grayish area, I guess, for, for me. So, I could, it's not sheet metal, it's just metal, but we're discouraging sheet, so, I, I, I don't know.
Well, let me just answer by saying, right now, we're prohibiting the sheet metal, or something that even resembles it, so, right now, it's prohibited completely.
Okay.
Now, and was it always that way in the code, before we even developed Udo?
Yeah, I guess I don't know what the language was before.
Who's got a, who's got a bent wick about sheet metal?
I mean, I certainly think it's, it's fair to say that-
You know, why is it even in there? We should just eliminate that sentence.
Which is why we tried to use the language that, you know, we were gonna look at things that were compatible and similar, so we could, you know, make some of those judgments.
Done, and then forget the line with sheet metal.
Jen, is your microphone?
E, a lot of use for sheet metal in commercial buildings as well, and I just feel like striking that last sheet metal as discouraged, and I'll just, I think, just the first sentence would make sense for the amendment, but, it's just too open in my mind to what is sheet metal, what is not sheet metal.
Yeah, how did that get-
Every building has metal in it, in some shape or form.
We're not talking about siding, though, we're talking about flat pieces of metal.
I'm sorry.
We're not talking about siding, we're talking about flat pieces of metal that you would see on, like, a factory building.
It could be siding, sure.
That's why, and they do make metal siding.
They do, it's all metal.
This revision, though, still allows it through some sort of admin, administrative review, correct?
It, it simply doesn't prohibit it, it allows it to be, to be looked at, to see if it fits in.
Right.
So, what is the difference between one and three, if we strike sheet metals discouraged? In the Udo? I'm looking at what you guys sent to us, I'm not looking at, I'm sorry, I went ahead and I was looking through. Where it's redlined in the book, do you know what I'm talking about? It says, in design, all building materials shall be high quality in all complement adjacent existing buildings, isn't that what we're trying to accomplish?
Yes.
With this sheet metal prohibited, you know, building materials shall be compatible and similar with the type of materials used in surrounding buildings. Then you take out, sheet metal is discouraged in all zones except for industrial. So one and three would be the same if we were to strike sheet metal as discouraged, basically. Does that make, it was in our packet, that's where I'm looking.
Yeah.
What was in your packet was the, the language that's on the bottom of the screen there.
In the Udo, where you have it redlined, I'm looking at the redlined part of the Udo.
Oh, what was-
Where one and three.
Okay.
Where it's section 39-5.11.
Right.
One, you struck out and replaced it with, basically the same thing that's in number three, under design. Is that, do you see where I'm looking?
You're saying the revision is repetitive.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you remove the sheet metal is discouraged part, otherwise, it's the same, plus, sheet metal is discouraged. You could add that, you could take out-
It's similar.
You could take out one entirely and add sheet metal is discouraged except for industrial, into three, and have less words in the whole document, is what I'm saying.
So...
Or, or just take one out completely, and renumber number two, and renumber number three, and leave-
Right, I agree with you.
Leave three the way it is.
Because you're still saying what we want to accomplish, high quality and shall complement adjacent existing buildings. Makes it a little easier for everybody.
Well, I guess I'll say, from our perspective, the idea was to get rid of the prohibition, so, sure, that could probably accomplish the same goal.
Alright.
So that would be a motion, separately, after a public hearing that I have to hold.
I was so ready.
Sorry to mess you up, Mayor.
That's okay, this is where the discussion happens. Does that have to come back to us, though, as a new revision? No, it can be a motion, okay. Is there any other discussion on that? No. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on this item, specifically, letter E, at this time, if you would like to come forward on this item. Nope, I will close the public hearing. And Jeff, would you like to provide us some motion?
I'm not as eloquent as the mayor on saying motions.
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, I think that Jeff, that you may, you may be interested in supporting.
You can support it, or you cannot, I guess, right?
Yeah. I, I recommend amending section 39-5.11A of the Udo, to remove section A1, renumber number two to be number one, and renumber number three to be number two.
I'll support that.
Alright, Mallory? She's writing it all down.
Sorry, yes. Alright, the motion is to approve with the stated amendment, Box?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
DeBlak?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to recommend passes.
Alright. Next item, letter F, under New Business, Chapter 39 Unified Development Ordinance, Additional Housekeeping Text Amendment Requests. That is very general. So Stephen's gonna run us through that?
I think that's the language we've used the last two rounds.
Yep.
So, this would be a punctuation or spelling type of errors that need to be amended?
T's crossed, I stopped it.
Yes.
Words added.
This is the most exciting round yet, I bet.
How would you rate this one?
Not a high bar.
So, we've walked through a little bit of this, so let me just quickly run you through, this is what we would describe as, what, you know, the, the corrections and clarifications that we've been doing, so, 2.06 Cottage Neighborhood Residential Zone District, you can see just adding the word residential with the title, and then including in the table, this is the setback, the sixteen-foot setback for garages, to make sure that they're not hanging out over either the street or the sidewalk. So you'll see this in several of the upcoming sections here. 2.08, sort of the same thing in the TNR zoning district. HDR, High Density Residential Zone District, same, same amendments, clarifications. 2.10, the Manufactured Housing Community Zone District, same thing, adding the table for the sixteen-foot setback. For the zoning districts that you don't see that in, it's because they have a setback that's already greater than, so it's not needed, so these are the zoning districts that have something less than that. We threw you a, a little curveball here, we didn't talk about this last time, so we threw this in here, this is the Hope Neighborhood Overlay Zone, Overlay District, section 2.21. Really, this is just a clarification, you read that existing language right now, it's a little bit awkward, it feels like it's the old double negative rule, so we tried to change that to what, you know, would be permitted, and then just no to the things that were not allowed in there, but it, the way it's worded today, it's really a little bit awkward. The other item to point out there is, we got rid of the ru, the word rumors, and went with borders, because we already use borders in our ordinance, that's the reference to the, the section 9.11, is where, it's somewhere else in the ordinance, so, really, we don't think this changes the section at all, it just reads much better. And I don't know if you guys had the chance to look at the clean version of any of these things, but I've been finding that it's almost a little bit easier to look at these amendments when you look at the clean version, rather than the red lines, and this was one in particular, especially by making the applicability section more of a list, than just sort of the sentence format. Section 5.03, this is where, and you probably remember this from our introduction last time, we just added a lot of referencing, so if a particular part of our ordinance, you know, maybe it uses another section or another code, this is the stormwater section, so we're just referencing some of the other stormwater regulations that we have from a separate code, providing a little more detail to that. Section 5.06 for the fire code is essentially the same change, the same amendment, and just like we had previously, we're kind of redoing some of the lettering there, so it's just making some of those changes as well. Further down in that, in that section, you see some of the same, some of the same, you know, lettering that changes as a result of bumping some things down, and then adding some language about the addressing requirements there in that paragraph five, and again, in that paragraph six, adding some language in there about where it references another code of ours. Landscape requirements in 6.02 is just adding some referencing to other parts of the code where landscaping is discussed. The lighting, 7.01, same thing, adding some other referencing to other parts of the Udo requirements. Chapter eight, section eight is the sign section, so this first one is in the area talking about signs exempt from permits, in that paragraph N, adding or site plan approval, so signs in conjunction with construction projects or site plan approval, this essentially would allow you to put up maybe your, you know, coming soon type thing after site plan approval has been awarded. 8.04 is, again, just a, a spot of reference at the end, in the PUD section, where we also talk about PUD for signs in that other section. 9.02 Parking, so, in the TNR zone, we require that you, vehicles are parked on an approved durable surface, so again, just sort of cleaning up this paragraph, putting in a little bit more of a, of a list format as well. We already defined what approved durable surface is, and then just sort of renumbering the rest of the paragraphs. Further down in that section, we're just combining a couple sentences to put those together, so again, nothing changing. That's it for that chapter.
You're on bicycle parking, did you mean that it just references another section? Sorry.
So we've got, should be section 9.02 there, that's the TNR zone for front yard, or for vehicles parking. Maybe I forgot a slide in there. Shoot.
Unless it's the one after the bicycle parking referencing?
No.
No.
Looks like I forgot a slide. It's in your packet, I mean, it would be the stuff that's, it's just a, again, it's combining two sentences, so they're not-
Okay.
-separate. It's, let's see, that's 9.02, 7B?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, combine, combining those, yep. Sorry. Yeah, bicycle, bicycle parking, just adding the reference to 5.09. This is another one that I thought was a lot more helpful, looking at the clean version, so under Principal Dwelling Units in 9.04, really just adding the clarification to define better what the characteristics are of a single-family dwelling unit, and then adding some clarification to how we measure building width, so it's on each elevation and it doesn't include a garage, so, I did include in the slideshow here just the clean version, just to show you, because I thought it was much easier to read that way, but again, we described that as clarification. And then we have, you know, a little bit more of what we had earlier, where we're kind of inserting in, in certain areas, the, the sixteen-foot parking rule for garages again. So this is in 9.05. We do have some, under, under the setback section, some clarifications in that section as well. 9.06, the accessory structures allowed in, required setbacks, so you can see, we struck out the word residential and, and include in all zone districts, so we're talking about maintaining open yards, we didn't think there was any reason that residential needed to be in there. 9.09, spelling correction on structure, and then just some reformatting as well. Then on the next page, we've got, under the infill properties, requiring site plan approval, the planning commission conducts the infill, that's the same, and then we struck the rest of that sentence, it didn't even look like that was maybe supposed to be there, it looks like a couple fragments, and then inserting in there the expiration of approval, so, once you get your infill review, it's valid for a certain amount of time, so we're simply copying the approval that we have in other sections of our ordinance. Almost done. And then we've got some amendments in the review process and approving tables, so what you see here first is adding the outdoor cafes where restaurant uses are allowed, and then sidewalk cafes where they're allowed, adding those into the all-zone district table, and then later on, we're removing them from a couple other zone district tables for clarification. You see, we've included the final determination for the zoning administrator for the Udo interpretations. And, let's see, it's on page 284, there's the residential dwelling with one to four units, so we're clarifying that to make sure that the final determination for zoning administrator is for the one building, and then for additional buildings that go to planning commission, where, at the bottom, you can see we're adding a new row in there, that would identify that the planning commission would review and approve more than one residential dwelling, one to four units. And then again, you see us striking out the cafes in the specific zoning districts, because we've inserted them into the all zoning districts where they're permitted. I think that is it, with the exception of, then there's just some, a couple final corrections on the table of contents to correct some titles of those zoning districts to include residential. So that is what we have for you, that, we are also recommending that we forward on to City Council for approval.
Any questions? Comments?
I know, that was a lot, I'm sorry.
Okay. This also requires a public hearing at this time. This also requires a public hearing. At this time, I will open a public hearing on this item. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Would anyone care to make a motion or need discussion?
Comment and then I'll make a motion. I didn't, I didn't ask, Stephen, I didn't ask you this question that I always ask. You, I think I know the answer. There's nothing substantive here. These are all clerical typos, uh, clarifications, those kinds of things in this group. So, and I, and I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, you and all of staff for separating these three particular items from one another because I think that's gonna be really helpful for council and for the public. 'Cause I think the first two I would throw into the category, the last two that we just discussed, I think would throw into the category of, of substantive. Um, I don't think necessarily hugely significant in, in a change in what's gonna go on in the city, but outside of that category that we've been talking about up till now with, hey, we're just doing some housekeeping stuff. These are the house, these are the housekeeping ones. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's, I think that's gonna be helpful for, for public and for, uh, the council to understand that, what we're doing here or what we're recommending here, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
So, I do have a, I do then have a motion. Uh, I would move that we recommend to council, uh, the, uh, extensive list of changes, corrections, and other items, uh, listed under these housekeeping text amendment uh, items. I don't know if that's gonna help you out, Mallory. Yes. All of the, all of those things that we, that were just so eloquently explained to us, uh, I recommend we make, to council that they make those changes.
Okay.
I'd support that.
All right. Dave supports. Mallory?
All right. The motion is to recommend approval. Box?
Yes.
DeBlock?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Stephen, for that long list. Communications and petitions scheduling of public hearings, there are none. Communications from commission members? Communications from staff?
Just a, a word that we're kicking off the non-motorized plan tomorrow with our consultants and we do have something scheduled for our March, for our February meeting, sorry.
Was your mic on?
We do, we will be kicking off the non-motorized plan, uh, tomorrow with our consultants and we do have something, um, scheduled for you for the February meeting.
All right. Sounds good. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor, say goodbye.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.